All right, everyone. Welcome to the regular city council meeting of the City of International Falls. It is Monday, March 20th, a little after 5:30. The first item we have on our agenda is to pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda, excuse me, with any additions. We do have a handful of additions, just minor ones. Under the consent agenda, we have allow necessary expenditures for paramedic butts to attend the Teaching and Learning Conference in St. Cloud. Another expenses for three firefighters to attend the Cold Zone Hazmat Conference, May 6th through 8th in Brooklyn Center, and expenses for paramedic MEAS to attend Comprehensive Life, Advanced Life Support and Trauma Module courses in Duluth on August 17th through 19th. And on the back page of your agenda, to approve the appointment of Travis Carlson as an EMT, subject to a background check. And number five is to consider Public Works Committee recommendations on the 2020 street improvements. Your consideration with the agenda and those additions?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries four zero. Before we go any farther, I would like to point out that Councilor Nelson is absent this evening. Her little girl has influenza, so she is in a quarantine at home, so she will not be attending tonight's meeting. Next is the approval of minutes. We have the minutes from February 18th, 2020, from the regular city council meeting. Your pleasure with that.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor, who was first?
Deitch.
Okay. And was that a second?
Okay.
All right. A second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries four zero. Next, we have a resolution for payments and claims, transfers and claims. The first is moving from the 101 General Fund to the Lodging and Tax Fund. That is $469.02. The City of International Falls Regular Claims, $322,990.14. Airport Commission Claims, $32,785.24. Airport Commission Terminal Project Phase Two Claims, $2,208.36. And finally, Runway Reconstruction Project Phase Three Claims of $160,030 even, for a total of accounts payable and claims of $518,013.74. Your pleasure with the resolution.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Deitch.
A second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Discussions, questions, concerns?
Sure, problems.
I thought maybe you were just angry about that.
Absolutely.
All right. Hearing no concerns, question?
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries four zero. Next, we have audience. Anybody in the audience like to come forward, discuss something that's not on the agenda? Hearing none, you'll have an opportunity again at the end of the meeting. Next on our agenda, we have opening of bids and quotes. This is for a new ambulance, Chief Manasseh.
The proposal that was given to you, we had budgeted money this year to purchase a new ambulance. We haven't got one in three years, two years, three years. We went out and got quotes from Premier Specialty Vehicle, and then also got a quote from Everest Emergency Vehicle. Everest provided us two quotes. One was for a demo and one was for a brand-new ambulance. PSV is who we've used in the past, Premier Specialty Vehicle. They quoted us basically the exact same setup we have now, so we got unified rigs. They are part of the SABIC buying group, which gives us, the buying group setup is centralized purchasing, so it's a lot like the state bid price system. So they follow that, and they did come in at the lowest quote of $199,404. And then with our trade-in and fleet discount, that would come to $178,604. So the recommendation for me is the PSV 2021 Horton 533 ambulance. And I'm available to answer any questions that come up with that.
Before we make a motion, does anyone have a question?
Just FYI, did Everest do anything with trade-in?
They did not indicate anything for trade-in, that I saw, anyway. I did bring it up when I talked to the gentleman about doing the bid, that that should be part of the bid, and that was not supplied in the bid.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the chief?
Chief, just a question, is that what, they're worth about $21,000 trade-in?
Yes. So the administrator had asked me a similar question, if we'd be better off trying to sell outright.
Sure.
I did do some looking. For example, Premier Specialty Vehicle, they have about 14 used rigs in front of their shop right now. I think the trade-in is a, gotta say this properly, for the right ambulance, they take the box off, they refurb it, and they resell it as a remount.
Okay.
For ones that aren't worth doing it, I think they probably get what they're giving for trade-in. It's not a money-making venture, so I cannot imagine that the market is that for a used.
Okay, thank you. And as a follow-up, can you give, I think I know the background of the ambulance that we're trading in, but could you give a little background in case the city would like to know about that?
Yes, so the 2014 ambulance that we're trading in, I apologize, I don't have the exact mileage in front of me, I was gonna grab that before the meeting, were right near 200,000 miles. That ambulance had a new engine put in at 80,000 miles, roughly, 80 or 81. So it does not have 200,000 on the engine, but the drivetrain and box and everything else have that 200 on it. One of the things we notice when we get that high mileage, stuff starts getting just loose rattily, so it's not just the engine we worry about, it's drive line, drivetrain, brakes, all that good stuff, but just the box itself starts to get a little, needs some work. So we're recommending the 14 for trade-in over the 15, for example.
So this one, this one we've had in service the longest right now, too, right?
Yep, since 2014.
Right, so, all right. Any other questions that we, please?
Mayor, I'd just make the point that as part of the low bid proposal from PSV is that on their, on their proposal, that the municipal fleet rebate is an estimated amount of $5,800, so that might be subject to some change. I assume that that's relatively minor, Chief, and not firm, and that probably varies because of the timing with Ford, but I couldn't answer that. I'm just pointing out that it's estimated, not an absolute, so there might be some minor variation in the actual price that we have to pay.
Is that true, Chief?
I guess I didn't notice that, to be honest with you. I think in the past, we've gotten what they've quoted, but I would say that's a fair point to make. It may be slightly different.
So the chair would entertain a motion to accept the bid, the low bid price as recommended by the chief?
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Councilor Deitch. I'm sorry, by Councilor Buller. All right, any, any discussion?
The only thing I'd like to note, Mayor, is just so everybody's aware, this is for the build and delivery of the vehicle, so we're looking at 180 to 210 days from the time of order of actually receiving the vehicle, so.
Okay. All right. With that being said, no other questions? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Chief. So next, we go to the consent agenda. Just a reminder to the council and, and audience, that the consent agenda does not have any discussion. We have five items on the consent agenda. The first is employee assistance agreement between the Sand Creek Group and the City of International Falls, to approve expenses for staff to attend the League of Minnesota Cities 2020 Safety Loss Control Workshop, to approve and allow expenses for paramedic butts to attend the Teaching and Learning Conference in St. Cloud, three firefighters to attend the Cold, Cold Zone Hazmat Conference in Brooklyn Center, and to allow and approve the necessary expenses for paramedic MEAS to attend the Comprehensive Advanced Life Support and Trauma Module courses in Duluth, Minnesota. Your pleasure with the consent agenda.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Deitch. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries four zero. Next, we go to the, to approve the resolution for approving the International Falls Bass Championship application and permit for a one-to-four day temporary on-sale liquor license for the annual International Falls Bass Championship, being held August 27th through the 29th at Smokey Bear Park. Your pleasure with the resolution.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Deitch. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I just want to point out that I'm very happy that we're receiving this in March, considering this is due in August. It gives plenty of time to make sure that it can get through the Liquor Control Board and everything, so.
Yeah, great. Any other discussion? Hearing none? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries three for the action, zero against, and one abstention. Next is to approve the resolution approving the International Falls Bass Championship application for an exempt permit to sell raffle tickets with the drawing to be held on Saturday, August 29th at Smokey Bear Park. Your pleasure with that resolution.
So move.
We have a council, motion by Councilor Deitch.
A second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries three for the action, zero against the action, and one abstention. Next, we will go to approve the appointment of Travis Carlson as EMT, subject to a background check. Your pleasure with the appointment.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deitch. Any discussion? Chief, do you have anything to bring up?
The only thing I would say is I think Travis would be a good addition to our service. He's been going through an EMT class, he finished it now, but he'll auto ride along with us, is very interested in the program, so I think he'd be a good addition.
Fantastic, thank you. No other discussion? Question?
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries four zero. Next is to set the comment period to review the draft of the Public Right-of-Way ADA Transition Plan for Streets and Sidewalks. Administrator Anderson, want to give us some background on that?
I can do that, Mayor. As you can see in your packet, there is a draft Public Right-of-Way ADA Transition Plan. That plan was prepared by WSN, our consulting engineers, and it's necessary to have such a plan in place or in process in order for the City of International Falls to receive any federal funding through the Transportation Improvement Plan that the federal government has. So, excuse me, because of that, we're putting together this draft plan, and we're suggesting that the city council take action to allow a public review and comment period that would extend from now or tomorrow, assuming that you approve it tonight, until 5:00 PM on Monday, March 23rd. That would give us a full three weeks of time for the public to offer any comments regarding the ADA Transition Plan, which is a requirement. So we're asking to publish a notice in the March 7th and the March 11th Journal about that, and I've included a copy of the draft notice in your packet, as well as a copy of the ADA Transition Plan. So we're asking for the council to approve the draft plan, authorize a review and comment period, and publication costs.
All right.
I think that's all I have for that.
All right. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the plan.
I approve the plan.
To set the public comment period to review the plan, I'm sorry. That's what we're doing, all right. So we have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion?
Mayor, I just want to point out, for the record again, that the motion that we're suggesting is that you actually approve the draft right-of-way plan, and that by approving the draft plan, that will make it available for review and public comment, and then we'll take those comments again and consider it at a future meeting sometime after Monday, March 23rd. I would anticipate that would be at the first meeting in April for final adoption of the plan, with any suggestions that the council may want to make to the final plan, based on the public comments that we receive, so.
So we're approving the plan tonight, then we're giving time, then we will give a final adoption?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Question, are these existing sidewalks or proposed sidewalks?
It's existing.
Administrator Anderson, between 9th Avenue and 11th Avenue on 11th Street, you have the sidewalk on the wrong side of the street. It's on the south side, not on the north side.
Can you repeat where that's at?
Between, between 9th Avenue and 11th Avenue on 11th Street, the sidewalk is on the south side of the street, not on the north side.
We'll look at that.
I don't have a sidewalk in my yard. It's on the other side of the street.
Okay.
So you're pretty sure it's not there?
I'm fairly certain it's not there, yep. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that it's on the, it is in fact on the south side of the street. That's why I'm asking if this is a proposed sidewalk, or if this is the existing, because the existing is on the south side of 11th Street, not on the north side.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries four zero. Next, we have Consider the Public Works Committee Recommendations for the 2020 Street Improvements. Councilor Buller.
Well, on your map that you have in front of you, there's a few scattered out to the audience, too. The tan or yellow, whatever color you have on there, are the proposed streets that are gonna be overlaid this year. The reason for this coming to us today is that if we can, if we want to, can approve it, we can get going on the engineering for it, so we can look for a bid letting in May. There's also 15th Street, you'll see in South Falls area, there's a brown-colored one there. That's overlay there also, but that's Municipal State A Road, so that'll be under different There's a total of 72 blocks, we're hoping that the bid would come in under 1.6 million, because that's what we'd like to bond for. The, there is gonna be some clause in there that if we, they do come in over 1.6 million, we have the ability or the authority to remove a few blocks if we have to, to keep it under that, that bonding mark. I'm just asking for approval from the council to go ahead with this and send it to the engineers and get the design work going.
Your pleasure with the recommendation from the Public Works Committee.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Deitch.
A second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Oh my gosh, I'm all over the place tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Question, is this, this is not a deviation from the CIP that we approved last fall?
There's some deviation, the CIP also included the, did some of the, the green ones on there?
Sure.
And we took, we took some of those off, because we were gonna do Shorewood and not do Crabtree, instead of trying to mobilize another few years down the road, why not do the whole thing and do it all at one time? So some, the greens got taken off and placed in other areas where it seemed like it was more of a flowing area, but those were the ones that were on there for this year, but they will be addressed in our 2021 project.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Please.
Just for clarification, for the public, and this was discussed earlier, that the projects that were scheduled for last fall will be completed this year, but they weren't completed last year because of the weather, but it is in the works for this spring.
Yeah, the 14th, it needs, where it put on, it had 14th Avenue, and then the first stretch of Shorewood, and also 8th Avenue. So, East, yeah, they will get done. And there will be, well, I won't say it'll be a different contractor, but he's already got the contract for that, so I would assume that before anything started, if he wouldn't get the contract and anything else, that would be completed and then move on.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I would, I would just like to point out some of the highlights that we have on this. Originally, we had looked at trying to do 85 city streets. That has been scaled back slightly due to cost concerns. It ended up coming in a little bit higher than we had thought. The estimate is gonna be $1.6 million for this project, is that correct?
Yes.
And in the event that, as, as Councilor Buller had said, in the event that the bids come in higher, we may have to take some of these streets, scale them back a little bit. But the highlight in, in this project to me is Shorewood Drive, being able to be completed in 2020. Home Lane, from the high school to, I don't, 14th Avenue, which is where we, we have that other work being finished. All of 10th Street, and in South Falls, the area that we get a lot of conversation about is that MSA Street of 15th Street. Now, we're not doing the entire length, however, we're gonna be doing where, where it's in really rough shape, so. We have that piece that's gonna be done, and Memorial Drive. Memorial Drive also is an area where we're gonna get a lot of bang for our buck. It's not in horrible condition, but it is gonna be able to be serviced for the next 20 years after the work that we do. This is, a vast majority of these projects are being able to be done because of the sales tax. So again, I want to thank the, the city residents for voting for that sales tax, because we're able to fix a lot of the roads and do the improvements that we need to do. So, without any other conversation?
That doesn't exist.
We have a motion and a second to approve those streets and send them for engineering. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries four zero.
You notice 15th in front of my house is not on there, okay?
I thought you moved to where that was.
Duly noted.
And notice where I live on 8th Street, there is no work being done.
See me on 11th Street.
All right. Next, we have to approve a temporary easement between Puller for Yuland Brothers and the City of International Falls and, and Coochin County, to, subject to approvals on behalf of the Airport Commission. City Administrator or City Attorney?
Well, Mayor, I can start out. The easement is being proposed by an attorney working on behalf of Yuland Brothers, and they're proposing to buy some property owned by Puller, and they will use that property as a staging area related to the construction that's necessary for the runway reconstruction at the airport. This is a temporary easement to allow them access from the large portion of the property, which is east of County Road 108, cross a 30-foot parcel, I'm sorry, a 33-foot wide parcel that's owned by the city and the county jointly, and then cross another small parcel owned by Puller before you get to County Road 108. And so they want to be able to access that property, I don't know if they're gonna use it as a gravel pit or a staging area for equipment, but they want to use that particular area, because it's a very close proximity to the airport for the runway reconstruction, which is still gonna occur over the next couple of years. They're also interested in it, and this is a temporary easement, as you pointed out, and the term is, is for 10 years from the date that the last person signs the easement. And they're hoping to be able to bid on the Highway 53, MinDOT project, as well as our local projects, if they have the staging area, this area could also be used for them if they happen to secure the low bid for doing our local projects. And as Councilor Buller had mentioned, you know, we're doing about 72 blocks in 2020. We're trying to do a roughly $1.6 million project, again, on local streets in 2021, and MinDOT right now has got Highway 1171 forecast for reconstruction in 2025. So again, this 10-year term will, will take ownership of this property or use of this property past that date. So we see that as being advantageous, because there'll be more contractors that can competitively bid some of our projects that are coming up here, and so this easement agreement will allow them to use that property for up to 10 years, and it's just a temporary easement across a portion of our 33-foot wide parcel.
Okay. Anything to add?
Well, not really. I think it will be advantageous to the city and the area, and it's for ingress and egress. There's not gonna be any improvements put on or anything that would hinder the future use of it, and it's sitting there not being used at all now, so I think it makes sense to do this.
Okay. So Chair would entertain a motion to approve the temporary easement.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
A second.
Councilor Kraus? Any discussion?
Mayor, I just want to point out that staff is suggesting that the motion include authorizing signatures by the mayor and the city administrator, and then also subject to approval of the easement agreement by the Coochin County Board. Things how we're partners in ownership of the parcel, so it would be subject to County Board approval as well.
And that's what you meant by your motion?
That's what I meant.
That's what I thought you meant.
Is that what you were saying? Yeah, that's what I was saying.
And Councilor Kraus, that's what you meant?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, good.
That's, I was thinking, and I just didn't say it.
Yeah, good. I'm glad we have that all situated.
No, we're on it. We're on it.
Any additional discussion, now that we're all on the same page with what the motion is?
Mr. Mayor, just one quick question. Are they, so they're not asking for any water, sewer, or any other improvements, just a, just an easement, basically, to get across, so they can access the?
Correct.
Okay. And this doesn't abut any parcels that are currently in the city? Is that just co-owned, but not in, just looking at annexation is where I'm going with this? It doesn't, I don't believe it abuts any parcels that are currently in the city, just co-owned between the city and the county on the airport property, so.
Yep. It doesn't, it doesn't affect the ownership of the parcel.
Right.
It just allows some use of the surface of the parcel.
Sure. Looks good.
Mayor, I would point out that there is a provision in the easement that requires that Yuland Brothers restore the property to its current grade and vegetation, so at the end of the 10-year temporary easement, they'll be required to restore whatever would be disturbed as part of having this ingress egress across this property that's owned by the city and the county. So that's a requirement in the easement as well.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries four zero. Next, review the steps, fine and timelines for blight enforcement. Next review the steps, fine and timelines for blight enforcement activities and direct staff to prepare necessary ordinance amendments for the first reading on March 16th, 2020. City Administrator?
Well, Mayor, as you know, having attended, there was a, uh, as I pointed out, an informal meeting discussing the, um, steps that, um, well, we wanted to review blight issues in the process that we go through to do blight enforcement. Uh, the goal was to try and look at shortening the timeframes, um, for processing blight violations. So, um, after the meeting, I prepared this memorandum that outlined, um, some background, and so it provides, uh, the committee had agreed and had identified several categories here such as garbage and junk, yard waste, house building issues or fence disrepair, abandoned autos, et cetera, grass exceeding six inches, and identify different timeframes for responding to each of those, uh, major, uh, areas. And so those are listed under timelines, and then under enforcement responsibilities, I reviewed the existing ordinance and inserted, um, the staff person that was responsible for undertaking the enforcement actions, um, for these various issues. And there's some overlap, so for instance, on house building issues or fence disrepair, you know, the ordinance does talk about the housing inspector having authority to do that, but in some cases, if it's structural, um, or other kinds of issues that, um, would involve the building code, the building inspector or building official could be involved in also participating in the enforcement action. So those were identified under that section called enforcement responsibilities. And then finally, the process, um, was identified, um, from the conversation and essentially what the group had suggested is that, you know, a notification tag be hung on the property that would be potentially in violation and, um, for the timeframe of seven days. And then we would also send a letter via regular U.S. mail. Um, third step would be at the conclusion of whatever time was specified in the notice that they had to comply, um, we would re-inspect the property to see if the work was completed satisfactorily, and if it was not in compliance, um, the enforcement officer could actually issue an administrative citation, and right now the fee has a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty dollar fine as the charge for non-compliance. Um, furthermore, I added some more language just to be clear, and if the fine is not paid when it's levied, then the city council can certify that cost as a special assessment against the property, which we typically do in the fall of each year. Um, but the city council could also proceed with, um, an order that the city attorney would prepare and then process as a civil violation, or our ordinance actually allows blight violations to be prosecuted as a criminal violation. So depending on the circumstances for each situation, um, it could be prosecuted as a civil or a criminal violation. Um, and, um, if it's done through the order process, then that violation would be scheduled and heard before the district court judge for, um, action. So having laid all that out, I, I did send an email to the city attorney, and I had wanted to just make sure that he was comfortable with this process and some of the timeframes. Essentially, the, uh, some of these are the same as what the current ordinance is, some of them are a little bit shorter, so, um, I think we're asking for the city attorney to, or looking for the council to, if you're in agreement with this, um, to ask the city attorney to prepare an appropriate ordinance amendment that would be considered as early as, um, um, the March 2nd city council meeting for a first reading.
This is the March 2nd?
I'm sorry.
City Council meeting?
16th.
16th, yeah. Thank you.
I think we're all off just a little bit this week.
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
Uh, the, uh, process was read, the seven steps of the process. I guess for public information, I would like the timelines read also along with the enforcement responsibilities, which are on the first page.
I can do that, Mr. Mayor, if you like.
Yeah.
Excuse me. I said that, now I don't know if I can deliver. The garbage junk, as I mentioned, was a seven to 10-day timeframe, and an editorial comment on my part is I think it should be seven days or 10 days from a ordinance standpoint, you know, which is it? So it needs to specify a minimum, and so it should be seven or 10 days, not both, but the committee had talked about some, something in the seven to 10-day timeframe. Yard waste was also seven to 10 days. Housing building issues or fence disrepair, 30 days. Abandoned autos, campers, ATVs, trailers, et cetera, 10 days. Grass exceeding six inches, seven days. Snow removal, uh, the snow by ordinance is required to be removed 24 hours after a snowfall. Um, building code, six months, and then, or up to six months to do the repairs, and then, uh, any permitted temporary structures would be allowed for a period of 90 days, but depending on the circumstances, it could also be extended for an additional 90 days for a total of six months. As far as enforcement responsibilities, again, in the category of rubbish or garbage and junk, um, that would be the housing inspector's responsibilities. Yard waste, housing inspector responsibility. House building issues and fence disrepair, housing inspector, but also the building official, as I had talked about previously, if there's structural issues or anything of a nature that's relevant to the building code. For abandoned autos, campers, ATVs, trailers, that was 10 days. It's somewhat unclear, but, um, the ordinance is clear now that if there's issues with abandoned autos and campers and ATVs in the right of way, uh, it's a police department responsibility to enforce that. But, um, the zoning administrator and the housing inspector can have, uh, overlapping authority for that, so that's what was suggested. Grass, weeds, other harmful vegetation that exceeds six inches, again, the timeframe was seven days, and that would be a housing inspector responsibility. Snow removal, I had talked about that, it's required to be removed within 24 hours after a snow event, um, after it quits snowing. Um, if it's not done within 36 hours, the city can remove it and charge the cost towards the property, but the ordinance is not clear as to whose responsibility that is. It does specify that the city administrator is supposed to report, um, violations to the city council. The building code, again, is six months, and that's a responsibility of the building official. Permitted temporary structures, again, allow for 90 days or extend for 90 days, and that would be a responsibility of the building official because he would be issuing a temporary structure permit to allow any of those types of structures. And then driving over curbs, uh, there's a prohibition to doing that in Section 8-12 that I found. Um, it's unclear, but if it's in the right of way, again, the police clearly have jurisdiction within the public road right of way.
Thank you.
City Attorney, do you have any issues with, uh, with anything you see in this?
I don't have any issues. Uh, it's going to, uh, require some significant changes to the ordinances, uh, and, um, the, uh, and probably helpful, uh, to Kelly, uh, to have these, uh, specific timelines set forth. Uh, the current ordinances typically, uh, have a, uh, more general range, uh, in our less specific, uh, so, uh, I mean, it certainly can be accomplished, and, you know, there are some things that, uh, have been, uh, allowable under the current ordinances that we, uh, you know, the administrative fees, uh, I'm not involved with that, but I'm not aware that, that we have been doing much, if any, of that. And also, uh, I mean, we currently, uh, do have the ability to criminally prosecute for these violations, and, uh, we've, uh, done very little of that. Uh, so there are some tools available to us that I think would be helpful, uh, that, um, we haven't exercised, at least not very often in the past. Uh, and, uh, I would suspect that this would, uh, hopefully get the attention of the community and, and have everybody, uh, be more prompt and better at keeping their places clean.
Well, the Chair would entertain a motion to, uh, to approve the, um, the policy and blight procedures and give to the city, um, city attorney to make ordinance changes at this time.
So move.
We have a motion by Counselor Deitch. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus.
Question.
Please.
City Attorney. Is March 16th, is that enough time?
Well, it, it certainly can be a goal, yeah. I think if, if we may, we may not have a final document by then, but at least I think I can commit that, uh, working now with Administrator Anderson, that we can have a draft, uh, that we would have for consideration, uh, you know.
So my, my question is, I mean, we're, so the, the proposal right now, as it's motioned, is to have the first reading that night. I'm just wondering if that is in fact, if we shouldn't change that to an update? I mean, that gives them 14 days from today to give us the first, it's the first reading. That's not a draft, that's the ordinance.
I, I would think it might make more sense that, uh, I mean, is, we can use a couple week timeframe, but, uh, try to get maybe something in front of a committee of the whole meeting to, to review a draft before we try to designate a first reading.
Right.
I think that's a good point. Uh, it, it would be hard, I think, to have the first reading two weeks from today.
Well, we do have a committee of the whole meeting on Monday. So we could shorten it to seven days for you, if you'd like.
I, I just, again, I just feel that that is, uh, this, the, the, um, motion as it stands is for a, a first reading, which I just do not see, I just don't see that being possible.
Okay, I, I'm willing to amend. Uh, the thing I want to make sure is that this keeps moving. We've dropped the ball so many times that we've got to keep this moving, and, and I'm going to keep pushing on it to get these dates as soon as possible and, uh, move our blight ordinances along. We have got to do something. But I am willing to amend.
We have an amended motion to, uh, just send it to the city attorney to make the ordinance changes. Is that okay with you, Counselor Kraus?
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, may I add that we have a, we do have a committee of the whole meeting, obviously, next week, but that is, that's too soon, but we do have one scheduled for April 13th, and then we could do consideration at the April 20th meeting, or the first reading at April 20th, which would give us first reading, second, so it would be law in May, which would give us, the, the grass hasn't quite started growing by then, so it gives us a little bit, it gives you time that we can have a discussion in committee of the whole. I know that's kind of kicking the can down the road, but it does give us an opportunity to discuss unless we'd like to call a special committee of the whole meeting.
I'm, I'm fine with, i-if we change the word to draft, I mean, I can have a draft ready two weeks from today.
Okay.
Uh, so at least it's out there and circulating and talking, and it gives you time before the committee of the whole or, or however we would do it, uh, to, to get it finalized.
Okay, so draft.
Does the council want to change, uh, the dates on the garbage and junk or yard waste or make a definitive answer between seven and 10, just so it's more definite in, in an ordinance? I believe that's something that, uh, the city administrator had brought up.
In my opinion, it's open to interpretation, and I don't want it to sit for holidays or any things. I'd rather see it just be either seven days or 10 days.
I would, I would suggest that we just do 10 days as a standard.
Sure.
Uh, you know, because sometimes, again, with holidays and weekends, I mean, seven days is a pretty quick turnaround.
10 days, I think so.
Okay.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, may I? Chief Manosa, you had made, I vaguely remember you made a point, is the 10 days more, the 10 days was more realistic, if I remember correctly?
Seven days works really good for my process, but, um, 10 is doable. We've tried five before, five did not work very well.
Sure.
And we tried to speed it up into five days, five doesn't work out. Seven works good simply for the reason of, if I write something on a Monday, next Monday it gets checked out. If I write something on a Tuesday, next Tuesday it gets checked out. If you're doing anything other than seven or 14, then you run into the weekends, you run into the...
Right, if you wrote it on Wednesday, it'd be the following Sunday.
I'm not saying we can't work around that, it's, it's doable.
We can do seven, I mean, I, whatever's easier.
If we have to go between one of the two days, I agree, seven would be better. They've got seven days, and if a, a holiday or a weekend falls on the seventh day, well, yeah.
It's an opportunity to get it done. You're off.
Yep.
So, seven days for both garbage and yard waste?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, is that a motion to amend to seven days for garbage and yard waste?
We'll add that in, yes, sir.
Okay, we have a, a motion to amend with seven days on those two, yard waste and junk. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Any discussion on the amendment? The amendment would change this to be just specific to garbage, junk, and yard waste to be seven days rather than seven to 10 days.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
While we're talking about that, I mean, with the abandoned autos, campers, ATVs, is there a reason not to use seven days there as well? I mean, we're looking at ease of turnaround and, you know...
I'm looking at...
Makes it pretty, makes it pretty uniform.
So, uh, are you willing to accept that as a friendly amendment to the amendment?
That's fine, change from 10 to seven.
Allow the amendment to the seconded amendment.
We're good, I still got this one. All right, so we have a, uh, amendment to the motion, it's good with both the, the amendment maker and the second, to change garbage and junk to seven days, yard waste to seven days, and abandoned autos, campers, ATVs, and trailers to seven days.
And just to note, grass already is seven days.
Correct.
So it's just, it's seven days. That's where we're at.
Hearing, uh, hearing no other discussion, I will call the question on the amendment.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries four zero. So now the, the, um, motion that we have is to send to the city attorney this, uh, um, this document for ordinance amendments with the amended, uh, language of garbage and junk to seven days, yard waste to seven days, and abandoned autos, campers, and ATVs and trailers is seven days. Everything else is as written.
Correct.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries four zero. Is there any other business to come before the city council this evening? Hearing none, we will go to the reports of boards, committees, and department heads. City Administrator?
Just a reminder, Mayor, that the, uh, presidential primary election is tomorrow. Uh, polls in International Falls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And again, that's just for the presidential primary only. So I just, uh, wanted to remind everybody there, and we will have, um, some of our veterans as well as some newer, um, election judges on hand to, to learn the process and the system. So I just have that reminder, I don't have anything else unless there's any questions of me.
Anyone have a question for the city administrator? All right, city attorney?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, another busy day, uh, in district court today with city cases there from nine this morning till about 20 after five. Uh, so, uh, lots of activity there. Uh, also, one thing I'd like to call to your attention, I don't know if you've heard anything about it yet or not, uh, we're doing what's called a warrant resolution day, uh, and that's coming up on March 12th and 13th. Right now, I don't know the exact number, but I think in excess of 300, uh, outstanding warrants, uh, from district court between the city and the county. Uh, and, uh, they've done this in some other communities, and the idea, a lot of people don't even know that they have these warrants. Uh, they may exist from not paying an old fine or not coming to court when they were supposed to, uh, and, you know, because of limitations on, uh, the law enforcement officers and their, and their time constraints, they're typically not out there searching for people that have existing warrants. If somebody gets stopped for a speeding ticket or, uh, running a stop sign or something, they'll do a warrant check, and they'll find, oh, you, you've got a warrant there, you need to take care of it. And, but sometimes on these warrants, they have a cash bail set, uh, but oftentimes they don't. Uh, and if somebody, for instance, was to get stopped for speeding, uh, 7 o'clock at night, uh, they're, uh, with a warrant out for them, they'd be taken to jail, and they wouldn't get out of jail until they got in front of a judge. Uh, and so if they had happened to be picked up Friday night at 7, they might sit there till Monday morning, uh, you know, because of something that might be easily resolved. And so the idea behind the warrant resolution day is to, uh, put note, and we're going to have some notice... to put, and we're going to have some notices, public notice, I think, in the newspaper, on the radio, I'm going to be on the radio this Thursday morning at 8:30 talking about this to get the word out to the public. And there's no downside to anybody coming to, anybody that comes to court during warrant resolution day is not going to go to jail. Their warrant will be lifted. And a couple of different things can happen. The county attorney and myself will be there. There'll be public defenders there and defense lawyers there. So in the best case scenario, the cases all get resolved, and they take care of whatever it was that caused this warrant to be issued. If that doesn't occur, then they would be given a new court date to come back to court on a certain date to get this process completed. So it's, because basically the reason for a warrant is a case got started but never got finished. Either they never had a trial, or they never pled guilty, or oftentimes they were convicted or pled guilty and were sentenced, but they didn't finish their sentence. Maybe they had some community service hours or STS they were supposed to do, and they didn't do. Usually, it's more than just not paying a fine. If it's, if you just haven't paid a fine, there's a process where they will send it to collections, and there'll be a judgment that'll be entered against those people for the amount of fine they didn't owe. But if there are other things that they were required to do apart from a fine, it just kind of sits there. And so we're very hopeful that this will clear up the backlog of many, many cases that have been sitting sometimes for years out there. Any questions, Sotol?
How would one find out that they have a warrant?
It's, it's in the notice. They can call court administration. There'll be a phone number, and they'll call court administration, which you can still do now. But they'll be encouraged to do that. So people won't have to come to court to ask if they have a warrant. They can find out ahead of time, is the warrant there, and then show up either Thursday the 12th or, or Friday the 13th. Probably the 12th would be better than Friday the 13th.
And I would assume you would contact one of us directly if we're, we're in that boat, correct?
I have not, I have not searched your background to determine anything in your past, and don't plan to.
Well, I appreciate that. And then, anything else for the city attorney? Have we heard anything back on the annexation or the paperwork through the county?
Yes, we're in the process of, one of the sticking points has been the legal descriptions and the way we presented it all. And we've just about got that complete. There's kind of one loose end that we're still trying to get together, but I anticipate by the 16th of March, having a, hopefully being able to report that we've satisfied the state and that annexation of the properties that are owned by the city is going forward, so.
Fantastic. Department heads, Kelly, Chief Manosa, all right. Reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
On, I just wanted to report on February 18th, Administrator Anderson and I attended the, the very first steering committee meeting for Habitat for Humanity in Kuching County over at Belon Ice Space. The, the meeting was a success. It, we outgrew the space as quick as we had it. So we will be meeting again on the 19th of March at 2:00 p.m. in the Bacchus Dining Room to continue discussion about potentially starting a Habitat for Humanity chapter in Kuching County. So I just wanted to note that that was, and that actually came out of the housing committee, which came out of the housing study. So Ariana Daniel is, is leading up. We're very preliminary right now, just, it's just a steering committee to look at what it would take. But in the January housing meeting at Bacchus, we had a presentation from the St. Louis County Habitat for Humanity. They came up and talked to us for about an hour about what it takes. And Administrator Anderson, what are they, they're doing, how many, is it five projects a year they're doing?
That sounds about right, yeah.
Yeah, for St. Louis County, they've done upwards of 20 in the city of Hibbing alone.
Wow.
So they just kind of said what it would take. So we're very, it's very preliminary right now, but we will be meeting again at 2:00 p.m. on the 19th at Bacchus to continue a discussion. There's no, no guarantees coming out of this, but anything we can do to help housing.
Fantastic.
Good deal.
No, that's very good. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Anybody else have anything? I would like to report that we did have a charter commission meeting last Tuesday, and we had some really good discussion on, on a handful of items in there. They, they did appreciate that the city council had given direction for them to look at. They did, they did look at the health officer position in the Board of Health, and they did make a recommendation to delete that from the language due to the city being in Kuching County and having the, the county health officer. So that was one of the things that they have looked at. They also started looking at the fire and police civil service. With that being said, I did have a conversation with them that evening. They are requesting to have the police, police chief, fire chief, fire civil service, and police civil service come in on their April meeting. Next month, they are going to go through and try to fix some of the typos or the, the simple stuff, and that gives them some time to have the conversation with, with anyone that may be affected by the fire and civil service leaving. I have had conversations with the police chief, the fire chief. I've had a handful of conversations with some individual officers from our police force that have had some concerns. I have had some conversations with individual members of the fire department. I am going to be meeting with both departments, the police department and the fire department, this Thursday, to just have the conversation on where we're going and what, what ultimately would happen in the event that we do get rid of the fire and police civil services. With that being said, I think the charter commission is very, very open to hearing both sides and making an educated decision. They were not jumping at anything. And I think that they just want to hear the pros and cons on both sides. But I do know that change and conversations can be difficult in our community, and we went through a lot of change. And I think that the police and fire just want to know and be part of the loop of what we're doing. So I am going to meet with them this, this Thursday, or, I'm sorry. Yeah, this Thursday. Yeah, this Thursday, right?
Yes.
Next Thursday, yeah, the next time it comes around. My days run together right now. But we are going to have that conversation of what, what expectations. And as I've been talking to individuals, I think their big concern is what happens then. So one of the conversations I've been having is if we get rid of the fire civil service, if we get rid of the police civil service, how do we hire? How do we, what policies do we have in place? What do we fall back on with state statute? What does that look like? And I think that those are really good conversations that the police and the fire are asking. And I think that the, the city council will have to come up with something. And I think the more we go into this, the more I think it's becoming very obvious that we need to have HR within the city. So those are, that's what came out of the charter commission meeting. It's, they do meet every month right now until we get to some resolution of how we're going to finalize the charter. And again, all of the charter changes have to come back to the city council. And when they come back to the city council for them to be adopted, I believe it has to be a unanimous vote, or it has to, is that correct? It has to be a unanimous, it doesn't have to be a unanimous vote out of the charter commission. Has to be a majority to come to the city council. But the city council, it has to be a unanimous vote to, to accept those changes. If we don't have a unanimous vote of the city council, once we get there, it would go to a referendum question to approve those changes. Please.
Is that a, and I assume that's a public meeting, the charter commission?
Absolutely is.
When is that meeting, just so we can get it on the record?
Fourth Tuesday of every month at 4:30.
5:30.
5:30.
At 5:30, so we're looking at the 24th?
Correct.
Of March at 5:30, and that's here?
Yep.
I would assume in the council chambers.
Yep.
Okay. I just want to make sure it was clear for the, for the record and those of you watching at home. Thanks for watching.
And, and again, in, in March, they are going to be discussing some of the simpler stuff, but, you know, changes, but.
Because I, I will note that I've had some phone calls about some, some concerns, and I'm taking it very seriously. But maybe they have an opportunity to attend that meeting and voice the concerns directly to the charter commission to just kind of see where things are at. So I think that's really important, that the public has a, has a say.
Well, and, and I, I would agree with that, too. I think that the bigger, the bigger issue is to make sure that we have all of the staff involved. I've done everything in my power, and I know that this city council has done everything in their power to try to keep everyone as informed as we possibly can. And just the timing of how this came out, the charter commission had requested, in the first month, they had requested action from the city council to make recommendations. Then we had our first city council meeting. It wouldn't come up at that first city council meeting in February. We discussed it at the committee of the whole meeting. We made those recommendations and we, to our next city council meeting. It went into the paper. I should have, we should have had a discussion with staff leading into it, the police and fire, and letting them know where we were at. I will take the heat on that in some capacity because we've been doing such a good job of trying to keep people in the loop of what we're doing, and we did miss the ball on this one. With that being said, I think we're going to make up for it in having the conversations and keeping them in the loop from here on out because it is definitely their livelihood. And I want to make sure that everyone is well aware, the city council is doing this to better the, the process for our staff. We are doing this to try to make things smoother for staff. We are not doing this for any malicious purpose. We are not looking at getting rid of the police department. We are not looking at getting rid of the fire department. This is to make things smoother for our staff. So, please.
Just a little clarification here. From my discussion with several people that are affected by this, if we should do away with the fire commission, if we did that, there would no longer be a buffer between an individual and, say, for example, Ken, if there was a conflict between the individual and the city, that Ken, as, as the chief person, could dismiss them really without a hearing. Is that correct?
Well, number one, everyone in the scenario that we have, and I think that this is probably a best conversation to, to have as we move through the process, but our full-time staff do have union representation.
What about the part-time, though?
The volunteer fire department is something that we would definitely be, I would be interested in looking at.
I would be very concerned. I'm a strong, strong union person, and I know they don't have a union, but they still need some kind of protection. And if the fire commission offered that buffer, I would vote against it if you needed it 100%. Unless something changes my mind as we investigate, it wouldn't happen.
I can understand that. I, it's a conversation piece that we definitely need to have moving forward. And I think that those, those concerns had came up at, at the charter commission as well. And so I do think that there needs to be a buffer, but I also believe that that can be an HR person at the city, because I don't believe that, number one, people have protections through state law and federal law, that we're not just going to be getting rid of them. They have those rights already. But with that being said, there is not union representation. I understand that, and that is a concern that I carry as well. And that is going to be something that we need to look at in those policies and procedures that are going to be put in place in the event that we do not keep the fire and civil, fire and police civil service.
I'm just concerned, because we say this for the betterment, betterment of the employees. And if we're talking about the volunteer, it's not the betterment to them, in my opinion.
Sure.
Understandable. Well, that was long. Anything else?
One short thing I didn't, we were talking about the roads here, that the, the reason that we're doing the ones that we're doing is our whole road system was rated here in the last year or two, and they were rated from one to five, five being the worst, one being the best. To get as much as we could done before twos and threes got to fours and fives, most of these roads are going to be twos and threes that were overlaid. And the infrastructure under them is good, sound, and, and solid, so you won't have to dig into those roads again. Some of the roads that we have looked, we got to do some more with the cameras yet, and some more cleaning and finding out where the infrastructure is. We don't want to do those roads that have bad infrastructure. We have to go back and do them all over again. So that's the reason for the ones that were picked to get overlaid. In case you've got questions on, you might say, well, my road's way worse than that one is. It may be, it probably is because it's maybe a four or a five. There are a few fours in here, too, but otherwise, we just concentrate on the twos and the threes so we get as much of those, many of those fixed up as we could before they got to be fours and fives. So in the future, we'll be working with more infrastructure and things, too. But we wanted to get as much as we could done with the money that we had. So that's the reason. If you got any questions, you can feel free to contact, you know, anybody from, contact.
Contact Walt Buller Direct.
My name's in there. I just want to clarify that. I just, I was thinking, somebody's going to wonder, why are we picking these? Well, that's, that's the reason. So, thank you.
Thank you. Please.
That makes sense to me. I understand. That may be just a clarification for people is what, what is the expectation for roads that are fives now? I understand your explanation, Ken.
Can I add to that?
I think.
Well, Chief Manosa, no, a five is going to be a five, is going to stay a five, and is a five. So I think that to get the most blocks done, it would make sense to prevent a two or a three from becoming a four or a five, because the rough five is going to, it's five. That's not saying that we're not going to get it done.
No.
But, but, yeah, so that is, that's in the, and that's in our, in our CIP to move down, maybe not this year or next year, but then in years following, to start getting those five, because those fives are going to be a total, tear the whole thing up, replace everything underneath. So it's just, it's in a matter of, of kind of stretching that dollar as far as it can. If those twos and threes don't become fives, as sad as it is, but a five is a five, and it will stay that way for a year.
To answer your question, I don't think that we, we have a date on the fives yet. I think we're going to try to do as many twos, threes, and fours as we can. I don't know of any fives that we have even in the, the CIP for five years.
But under the fives is usually the infrastructure that's bad, too. So that's going to be a whole road reconstruction. It's going to involve a lot of money for, for, you know, for a short stretch of road.
And I think the goal is, is once we, we address those fives, the first thing we're going to do is the water and sewer underneath it, and let that sit for a year before we get to that. So I mean, that's going to be down the road. Hopefully, we can get to that point. But right now, and, and I hope that that answers your question, but I don't think we have a foreseeable five-year plan for any of the fives. Is that, that's accurate? Wow. We're having a lot of discussion in committee. All right, any, anything else to come before us? Hearing none, we will go to audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to discuss something? Please. State your name for the record. State your name for the record.
My name is Bobby Bernath, and I was just looking at this plan that you guys have. Can you tell me, is Sixth Avenue, Fifth Avenue, Seventh Avenue, Eighth Avenue, are those dirt roads? Are they in this as going to be fixed ever?
Not in this plan, they're not.
Okay. So in International Falls, we're still going to have dirt roads, and houses that are nice houses and dirt roads. And you're paying, I pay $2,100. My, my stretch of road is tarred, but the rest of Sixth Avenue is not. It's like the railroad grade.
Those residents chose not to have their road improved. There was a petition, and they chose not to have their roads improved.
And that's okay. But, you know, if you're going to fix International Falls up, you should look at fixing it up all over. should look at fixing it up all over. And there is sewer and water that's already been put in there, so that wouldn't have to worry. I, I mean, I'm just bringing this up because I kind of laugh, because I'm looking, I'm looking here, and I'm thinking, okay, Crabtree, Shorewood, that's already been tarred once.
Mm-hmm.
Now you're redoing that again, and we have dirt roads here.
So when we have dirt roads, they have to be assessed to the homeowners? The homeowners have requested not to have that assessment done to their properties, and once the assessment happens one time, the city is on, is liable for any of the improvements after their, after that. But those homeowners have chose not to have that road improved for the first time. After it's improved the first time, the city is then going to be doing the improvements after that, but they have to pay for it, and they have chose not to.
And, and that's fine, but I'm just, that's one of the things I wanted to bring up, because you're looking at blight, but you should also be looking at some of the dirt roads.
Okay. City administrator, do you have anything to add to that?
I do, mayor, we had talked briefly at a public works committee meeting, and I had raised the same issue, if the council was, or if the committee was comfortable with how we wanted to address gravel streets, and, and past practice for the city has been to consider improving those streets on a petition basis. So if somebody wanted to have their gravel street improved, they would approach the city. We have petition forms that can be prepared, and then by state law, in order for us to move forward, we need to have at least 35% of the fronting property owners sign off, or sign a petition requesting the improvement, and then that, that petition is presented to the city council, and then the city council would order a feasibility study to see what it might cost to do those improvements, and ultimately, it would be a council decision to move forward. It only requires a simple majority if a petition is submitted, and, and that's what our past practice has been. And you had talked about Sixth Avenue, there was a petition, as the mayor pointed out, distributed, and only the people in the southernmost block adjacent to 20th, and I believe that's where you live.
Yep.
Signed off on that, I believe 100% of the fronting property owners signed that petition. Everybody to the north, the next two blocks north, did not, and my personal bias is I would prefer that, to see all that stretched done at the same time, too, for dust control, and just not have such a haphazard network of gravel streets versus paved, but that's my, my choice. And so the city's past practice has been to accept petitions before we move forward with improving gravel roads.
Yes, and that's what happened, you're exactly right. But I also think that, am I wrong on this, that at the time, the council said yes to our one block?
Mm-hmm.
Which is fine, because it's in front of our house, but I think they also, could they have said yes to the rest of it, but some of them said no, the majority was no?
Yeah, I think it was an elective decision on the part of the council not to do the two blocks to the north, because the majority of property owners fronting on those, those sections did not want it.
Right.
But with 100% in the south block, if you looked at the whole thing as one project, it technically would have met the 35% minimum.
Yes, you're right. But I just was wondering, because like I said, I just think it's, you know, we're worried about blight, but we, our roads are, we still have gravel.
And to put that in perspective, I mean, Ken can back me up on this, I was 100% in, in agreement that we should be doing all of that road. However, when it failed at council, now, I mean, now you have to do a new petition, it's a new, new piece, you know? So, but at the time, I definitely supported doing the entire thing, because I thought it was a waste of resources to have someone there and not do it. But now that's in the past, and there's not.
And also, to put it in perspective, if you look at the, at the cover page there, the 22nd Street is, the improvements we're talking about is currently gravel, and that will be assessed, and the landowners are all on board, so that's why it's not included in the bonding, because the, the, the money for the street repair will be assessed to the property owners, and they're, they're on board with that.
Okay.
So as per, as per the practice of the city, that's per what we're supposed to do.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, anyone else in the audience? Laurel? All right. We have correspondents from the visitors and convention bureau, they're meeting minutes. Our next city council meeting will be on Monday, March 16th at 5:30, that will be ran by the mayor, Pro Tem Kraus. I will be on vacation for two weeks, starting on March 14th, and coming back on March 28th. So the next city council meeting is all yours.
Thanks.
Yeah, you're going to do great. You really will, you will do great. All right, hearing no other business to come before us, this meeting is adjourned.